...of county commission, but they are just things that I think are worth saying out loud. So, does that make sense to everybody, kind of, where we are and what we're doing? Um, the other thing is, uh, the other document that, uh, you have in front of you is the, is the same document that I did see, uh, Myers Morton on Tuesday, I mean, no day that we'll be met, but I think it was Tuesday. Then I've asked him to put into an ordinance, um, these are the things that came out of the committee. So, these are not, shouldn't be new necessarily in, um, concept, but they may be new because they're actually written down. But I went back through all the notes, all the minutes, everything from the meetings, and worked through and said, what were the things that we came out of that having s- either some sort of consensus or agreement on? And then, of course, the things that we didn't, I didn't leave in here. So, these are things that, um, I'm asking him to put into ordinance. The process of that, of course, is to go to ordinance, then that would be presented to the county commission. Um, ordinances take two readings, so that would, um, be written up, submitted for the May. Same thing as according to the timeline here, um, submitted, sorry, not May, March. Submitted to the March, uh, commission meeting, uh, for further discussion and debate and consideration. If it passes on first reading there, then it would go to a second reading. And then, um, I have asked for any of the, uh, ordinance changes to, uh, have a effective date of gelatinized, which would give everybody, uh, more than enough time to, you know, adapt and retain. So, do they have the same page for that?
No. Um, the, on the second in the recording.
I'm, I'm, I'm just outlining the process.
Okay, okay, we're, we're good with the process. Okay, go ahead, keep going.
Okay, before we get into the actual stuff, is everybody, any, any questions or thoughts about, like, the process and the timeline? No? Okay, alright. So, and then I want to just go through the next, uh, step of just kind of walking through this. Um, the first one, um, and of course, I just, what I did was I went back. Each of these is referenced in the actual policies and procedures, um, section that, you know, is the document that everyone works off of. Um, this changed or adds a new section here. This was something that was talked about at the beginning, mayor council representatives, uh, will be given ample and adequate time during orientation of all classified employees. It's responsibility of mayor council and staff to probably educate each new classified employee of the purpose, roles, responsibilities, and resources available to them through the mayor council. So, this just adds in that the administration must give ample time for you all to make sure that you are fully educating everybody. Pretty simple to, okay? Any questions or thoughts on that? Okay. Um, the second section was about filling vacancies. It currently reads, uh, as in six point one point one general, uh, that is, uh, section E. And one of the things that we talked about in the commi- committee meeting that everybody, um, came to consensus on was the idea of having the sheriff's office administration be the sole responsibility for recruitment. Um, one of the ideas originally, of course, was that everybody's saying they don't give us enough applications or they don't give us enough hand bits or whatever, and so we had a long lengthy discussion on that. And so, the way it's written here, as, again, this is all as proposed. It's the sole responsibility of the county sheriff's office administration to contact all aspects of recruiting, advertising, job fairs, promotions, recruiting, basically. They've gotta, they've gotta give people, put people in the bucket. Thoughts on that?
Yes. Um, how do you define recruiting with the sheriff's office? As you've talked to them about the process of actual recruiting, what that means, uh, the applications? And, um, I guess another thing that's thrown in here is promotions. Uh, we did not discuss promotions at all at the committee meeting? Job fairs, promotions, and others such?
Um.
And what exactly does that mean?
Uh, let me see here, job fairs.
Did we just get?
Oh, recruiting for, like, the, the, like, an average, when you-
Promoting recruitment, like promoting measures for recruitment?
That's what it means, not promotions as in rank promotions, correct.
Okay.
Thank you for saying that.
Okay.
Um, promotion, so, I should just take that out.
Promotional material.
Yeah, materials, yeah, promotional material, that's what that means. It's, it's basically, look, a- at the end of the day, this co- this would codify that your whole job is to, however you want to define it, and it's not, again, it's not the commission's job to define it, that their job is to go out and actively recruit people to be officers within the sheriff's department. And that could be any number of ways. It could be social media, and from job fairs, it could be out there, talking to schools, but it's their responsibility now.
So, when they apply, when they recruit and have them apply?
That, then you start the whole, then you follow the, the process that we've been through a hundred times of, of the-
So, they're gonna refer them to our website for the application?
Correct. However it's set up for the, somebody to apply, as outlined in the, we went through this, I think, and I want to check out the current file.
This is, because this is not what Myers, when he met with me the other day, explained to me that he was rewriting the ordinance for.
The goal, I always, the process was just for me to give this to Myers, walk through it with him, me to sit down with you, and then me to continue to work on it. Myers decided to send it to you and explained it in advance before I did, so.
No, after, he explained it to me after, um, he met with you.
Okay.
So, he basically just explained that he was rewriting the ordinances to pertain to this, but one of the ordinances was to take away promotions from there. He did say that specifically?
Yes, he did.
Okay. This is all about recruiting, has nothing to do with any kind of internal promotions of a rank or an officer. This is about the office administration, the sheriff's office administration recruits people. They are, it's all a conflict, so this, the mayor council would no longer, you know, if they don't send applicants, that's their problem, and you all would not have any role and responsibility. That's it. Question? Do you have any questions, anybody?
Well, uh, so if they, if they are not that recruiting and they don't have any employees interview and we're short employees, how's that gonna work?
It's their job, I mean, that, it's their job to manage the workforce. Doesn't mean that somebody still can't come across your site and still apply. Doesn't mean somebody still can't find their way to applying any other way, shape, and form today. Doesn't close, it doesn't mean that it's exclusively, they have to talk to them to be able to apply. You still have an opportunity right now, you can apply on the website right now, right? In contact, you did it, so that remains the same. But they, they are, as the sheriff and his team, their job is to manage the workforce. And so, you know, one of the things that we talked about would be to sort of streamline whose role is that and goal is that. That way, nobody can blame the other side on, you didn't give us enough people. That's something we heard a lot, was the administration would say, well, they don't, they haven't given us, look, it's your job to put people in the pipeline, that's your role. Go out and do it.
So, we wouldn't be allowed to advertise on D based on nothing anymore?
Well, I hate to use the word allow. I think that, I think the goal is to say, this is your responsibility. And if it's their responsibility, let them have that responsibility. And if they fail at it, that's on them. If they succeed at it, great, that's on them. But like, take a piece off your plate that doesn't cause controversy and doesn't cause strife to say, well, it's your fault, you didn't give us enough people. Like, even, people can still apply, but I think taking that off your plate and putting it squarely on their plate says, it's your role to fill the bucket. And then it's, you know, it's their role to fill the bucket.
So, then if we find out that they're not filling the bucket?
Then, as you're-
Then we have to go back and rewrite an ordinance that's been there for thirty years because it's worked that way? This is what I'm so confused on.
No, it's, it'd be the same way, like, let's say you guys have a responsibility in here to, you know, I'm not gonna relitigate it, but to schedule the psychological, right? That's your responsibility, it's been clearly defined, we discussed it, it's, it'll still be your responsibility. If you don't do your job, then, you know, somebody's gonna say something, you're probably gonna come back to commission, just like anybody else in any part of government. If they don't do their job and there's a big issue, we may put light on it. But, you know, you still have to give people an opportunity to succeed in their world. If they don't recruit, I mean, it's the same structure as KPD, as a thousand other, um, uh, administratives across the country. Go recruit, build a team, put money towards it, go figure it out.
It's not rewriting, writing, it's just, this is just the manual.
But he's rewriting the ordinance.
In order to change this, you, you, there's things that have to be done via ordinance.
Um, has anybody just made sure that the TCA doesn't?
The, the Myers will, Myers will take all of this from a legal standpoint and make sure it's in proper form and that he double checks certain things.
Because I don't, I don't, I didn't bring my stuff, but I, I feel like that, it's written almost verbatim, so that would be very complicated process.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of TCA issues that's gonna go along with all this.
Well, Myers is-
And as long as Myers is aware that this is a promotion.
It's just very complicated, uh, yeah, you, I'm sure he'll, I'm sure it'll be fine, I just feel like that, that-
Well, he's already confused, because he specifically told Lena and I that he is writing the ordinance to make a lot of changes, and one of them includes taking promotions out of hands of-
Okay, but, again, guys, I gave him the same document I gave you.
I know, but he's just a student.
It's not, it's not very complicated. This is what it says now, this is what I'm asking it for it to say in the future.
Okay.
And I will make the-
We'll see what he writes.
Okay, yeah, and he, but as the legal authority, his job is to, if there's something that comes up against state rule, but again, as a charter county, he's already verified, there's certain things that we can and can't do, you know? He's already been through those questions, so. Okay. Um, section three, mayor council structure requirements. This is, um, this is about the board, this is about the governance. Again, we talked about this in the committee, this is broken down in three point one, section A in the notes. Um, and I'm proposing editing it with new language that would say that seven persons will be appointed to the county, by the county commission to serve as a term of three years with no member serving more than two, uh, consecutive terms. One member shall be elected by the council to serve as chair, one member to serve as vice chair, uh, and one to serve as secretary. Again, even though the ma- the secretarial, like, the minutes duties may be done by the team, in most governing bodies, there's a chairman that, or a secretary that signs off on those and says that these are proper, it's pretty co- pretty common to place. Um, and then, of course, the, that preamble of the term, term limits in section nine point two applies. So, I'm striking, I'm proposing the striking of an alternate member and just creating a seven-member body. One member of the county commission, again, breaking, going back to the original, that it falls under county commission from a l- a legal and authority position, didn't seem, couldn't see any reason why we would not have a commissioner serve on it, as we do with other bodies. Um, one member having some professional law enforcement or corrections experience, one member having professional experience in the legal and/or human resources profession, because those are two elements that are pretty critical. Uh, one member having professional financial experience, I think that was something Crystal, you or s-
That was, was-
Somebody said something that, and I'm really confused why that would be. I mean, we don't handle anything financially from any aspect, you know?
So, I think the notes that I had, there was a question about whether or not that would be a good idea because, um, it did, there's some things that deal with, uh, pay and s- and budgeting and overall structure. And it said it would be a good idea to have somebody that has some experience in the financial world and be able to look through data on what do people get paid or what are their overall budgets or things that are relate, that may be related to officers, so that was the reason why. Um, three members having experience in the community, serving on some sort of professional group or nonprofit board or HOA, some sort of extensive volunteer period, meaning they've been through something that has to do with governance processes before. And then, uh, any nominations for that would be, uh, followed basically the way we do everything else in county commission under the rules, section F.
So, who would be required to make sure that these people are found to do this and to make sure that they meet each of these requirements on a consistent basis?
Well, like any other nomination process from commission, we would go through it. Names would either be submitted by commissioners or suggested by, it could be you, it could be, it could be anybody. All right, people could apply. Usually what we do is when we have a nomination, we put out a notice that says, you know, we're now open to up, uh, nominations for this particular thing. If you're interested, please send your information in, and then we go through that nomination process. We just did that with the, one of the new committees, we've done it fairly often.
And how the current council stands, there, there is an alternate member right now. So, basically, there's not gonna be any room for her if she wishes to continue, so she's basically-
She could be one of those three members.
She's not. Oh, but, but there are already three that fit in with that, that are actual members right now.
But she could.
So, basically, it's just, sorry, there's no spot for you anywhere.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, she could be one of those three members.
But, okay.
What she's saying is the rest of us-
There's already three.
The, yeah, the rest of us fall probably what you would consider community service, nonprofit.
Well, one member having law, give law enforcement experience, so you can, does, uh, uh-
None.
Jim Jennings? Okay. Okay, so that's something to consider.
Because I think that-
And I don't know what her, I don't have her information.
I think in the, yeah, I think in the committee, though, I mean, what I understood is we just asked Myers to check and see about increasing the number.
And he said that we could.
Okay, so.
We also talked about, eh, what's the good size and what, or generally what is a good size of a board? Is it, you know, five members, seven members, nine members, eleven members, et cetera? I think the, uh, the consensus, some of the discussion was between seven and nine members. Uh, my experience with board governance is seven is sort of the minimum, you never want more than about fifteen. You know, again, I think seven to nine is a good spot, it takes it, it keeps it manageable and keeps it, you know, focused.
I think when you put words like shall in here and you get very specific about having professional law enforcement or corrections experience, or even like person, pers- professional financial experience, um, when you define them so concisely, that's gonna be really, you might be really hard pressed to find somebody meeting that criteria to fill those spots. Um, as long as the vetting process is correct, I don't know that you would need to be so specific about the board members, you see what I'm saying? Um, I would also suggest, I don't know how the commission would feel about it, but give them a little compensation, just because the TCA does allow for room for the members of the board instead of voluntarily, because I know that it's exhaustive for them. Um, just, I mean, most of them deserve it, just to-
Yeah, I don't know if there's a precedence for other, um, I don't, I can't remember another board that commission appoints people to has compensation, but I need to look into, are there any other?
The tax board.
I just need to look into other, other boards to see, yeah, okay. It's not commonplace, but I, I mean, that, there may be others. That, I, I, let me rephrase that, there may be ones that are under the governance of county commission, but there also may be ones we appoint to that may be like utility or other boards that may or may not have them. But I, I need, I would need to look into that to figure out, do we, is that commonplace, other ones that are directly under the governance of this?
Yeah, like, is there other volunteer board, how many, like, other volunteer boards are there?
Yeah, I just need to check into the, um, is there precedents to, to look at? As, going back to your first point, the, the, the idea to define specific s- skill sets is to bring a, a diverse set of people together that might bring different skills to the table, so you don't end up with just one sort of group of people. And, and so, I, I'm a big believer, if, the better you can define that, the, you know, if you can't find somebody in that one particular field or something, then maybe, you know, you adjust it later, but, um-
Well, or, I'm, or at the, on the, yeah, but on the, if you can't find somebody to meet that, then just include that into the shall part, because we should put shall, like, like, you know, professional law enforcement, um, or corrections experience. In the event that person does not come forward, then blah, 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 you know what I'm saying?
Like best efforts to, or something, or should have instead of shall have, or something. I'll, I'll check the language of that. There may be a way to say, this is our goal is to have this.
Oh, it's the law, there's a way to be gray about it.
Yeah, of course, of course, okay. Um, further on, on the next page, um, this is something I picked up from five or six other, um, I found this in all kinds of different boards where they define essentially, uh, the eligibility. And I think one of the things that is important is having, making sure that people that are serving on the board have not been employed with the sheriff's office, you have that within five calendar years. But my proposal is within ten, because when I look at administrations, you have sheriffs that are four-year terms. And so, to get out of essentially one administration, you really need ten years, not five years, because five years means you could've, you could've worked and then the, you know, you're still within that same administration or it may have shifted. So, the goal of this, um, section in this new language under D is to try to, to make sure there's as much impartiality as possible going forward, and so that's why I put the ten years. And then, to really define, um, you know, who is it that is on the purposes, immediate family, and really defining that in a way. Now, there could be in this part here, a grandfather clause. I asked, um, for the terms, because I wanna make sure we're conscious of the fact of who's serving on the role now. And under this, there would be a conflict between you and Mr. Jennings. So, I, I have asked Morton if there's a way to put a grandfather clause on who's serving in what capacity right now and say for any new board members, this would be the case.
But there isn't, or David Booke.
Is, I'm sorry.
David Booke approved that there was no problem with me or Jim, because we're not blood related. I checked that out before I even got on the council.
Under the current council, but I'm saying, under this new, if this new language was adopted, there would be a conflict under D. And so, I asked to have any kind of grandfather clause put in there, because if that new language was adopted, it would be a conflict.
Is employed compensated, like the term employed? And the reason I ask is, um, in the first, uh, where it says, uh, no person shall be blah, 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 um, has been previously employed, employed, is employed defined as compensated? I'm just asking because I have a person that's very interested in serving, who, whose, um, spouse may volunteer, but he's not compensated.
I've had, I've dealt with that. Uh, recently, there was someone that was not within the five years and, but they were checking the time, because I think it was a reserve officer. So, the law department did look that up, and it was from the last time they were compensated, yes, that they received a paycheck, so that was a question.
Yeah, so I think volunteer would be okay, but if you, or actually compensated in some way, you're getting a ten ninety-nine or W two, then you are an employee of.
So, we might need to make it compensated instead of employee, employee? Because technically, the reserve is employed, but, but even if they're on an auxiliary special team as a special officer, does that classify it as employee? You see what I'm saying?
Oh, so you're saying they could be deemed employed from a protection standpoint, but not paid?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so let me explo- let me explore that.
Yeah, so reserves volunteer sixteen, sixteen at least, minimum hours. But they are, there are also, they're compensated, I think there's like ten or twelve of them, I think, that do get a little bit of money, um, but, but hypothetically, oh, don't say hypothetically. Um, in the event somebody was on a team as a volunteer and they weren't compensated and their spouse wanted to serve, are they excluded? That may, I'm, am I talking in circles?
No.
I'm not, like, if it's not the reserve, if they're, let's say they're on the job team.
But you're talking about their spouse, not, okay.
But they would, yeah, but the language says, so if, okay, if I didn't work here and I volunteered to be a negotiator, and then my husband, um, okay, that does, I don't know if I can explain it and try to make it make sense.
I, I understand what you're talking about, so what I will do is, I'll, I'll explore that word employed and maybe we can better define that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, alright, so that's the last of section three. And a few notes here to work on the language. This would also be terms, again, terms starting in July, um, for anybody that would be new. You have current terms that are existing, but if you had any new people, then it would start then.
Are you gonna stagger those?
Um.
They should be staggered, I, I would suggest that, that.
That's a good idea. Yeah, I think in, you, there's a, there's easy language to say that, you know, a three-year, a two-year, et cetera, one year. Okay, um, section four is about the meetings, and essentially, I have new language here. Just, the quorum should consist of five members, that changes according to the number of board members. That's just a adjustment, and the rest is stayed the same. I have asked Myers to outline, and he's out, he's looking for, um, just language on, related to meetings lo- at a location accessible. Um, just outlining this a bit more, probably notice, these are things that occurred now, but I wanted to sort of just codify in the language and double check it. And that, um, we talked about in the ch- in the committee, uh, video and audio recording available, and then the ability for a chairman to ask for executive session. And that he, he is re- defining and looking into private matters, but he essentially said that every single thing is open unless it comes to a litigation matter. So, as, ho- the Open Records Act would include everything unless it had to do with pending litigation. And that could be done in executive session, where meeting would adjourn, that would be done in private. But unless it's, has to do with litigation, every single thing else can be in open. And, you know, I think, I'm a, a person believer that more transparency is better. It takes the, it takes the innuendo and accusations out of things, it puts everybody in the board, and, and it's a good thing for all boards to have as much transparency as possible. But he went through that, I think he sent out that to the committee, um, and, and researched it, went through all of the legality and said that there's not a reason that every single thing that happens at mayor council can be, is in public record.
Medical and HIPAA.
Well, if I was gonna say, if I'm injured and the on-the-job injury board is talking about my medical stuff, I don't want that to be public, and that would be covered by HIPAA, I would assume.
I think it, I think if it has to do with litigation or HIPAA, I mean, he's checking this. This is why I put it, put notes on here that he's gonna go through it. So, HIPAA, I think, is one of those other issues, but, you know.
Yeah, because it wouldn't fall under litigation, because like, we have sometimes the board, we, I'm not on it anymore, but when we would need to discuss if, like, OJ, I could be extended and stuff, that wouldn't be litigated, it would just be a vote, but they also discuss the medical side, and I wouldn't personally want my stuff out there. So, I would just make an, yeah, just make sure he clarified.
This is section I didn't have a lot of clarity on, so he's gonna spend a ti- a lot of time making sure that's defined in a way that is, is, the use of executive session is pretty normal, eh, circumstances when it comes to-
Stuff like that, yeah, okay.
But, that's a pretty normal process for any governing board, whether it be a government, govern- or nonprofit or anything, so. He's gonna work through that, but essentially, um, I think, I just think it's important to make sure that everything is open and transparent. It takes a lot of the guesswork out of it, makes a lot of the, I, I, most of these things are to k- also keep people from saying, oh, well, they do this, or she does that, or dah, 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 dah. Like, just, if it's, if everybody's on the same playing field, then you should never have any questions. And that's the intent of this. Um, and then-
The only thing different under this is what we're doing right now, because all of our meetings are recorded. So, the only thing difference, give it the opportunity for CTD, which would mean we need to be in the other room. We could be in the largest ever room.
Or small, they can do it in the smallest one, either one.
Or you have a major building.
Yeah, or AJ could be used, or, I mean, well, there's a, there's a bunch of setups for it. Uh, the last section is just authority and responsibilities. This is the, uh, basically to change four two, four point two point two to just council leadership responsibilities. And then, you know, I'm striking the last, proposing to strike the last, um, interface and, and just including perform the duties of the vice chair and the secretary. I'm not exactly sure. Uh, I don't, I don't know why I, that last line, we had a note on it, but... Just outlining the vice chair and the secretary.
Did you, you put this together?
What's that?
You, you put this together?
Yes, sir.
And what's the reason of the?
I'm trying to remember that, I'm sorry, I had a note about that, but I, it's not on the sheet.
Because I would think that-
I would think that that's a, I, yeah.
I think you would want your chairman to be able to talk to the county commission first.
Well, of course, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I, I'm, I'm gonna say leave that in there for now. And unless I can find a note, I'll come back to you guys on that. But, but basically, the adding of the vice chair and the secretary. So, that's all of what I would consider structural changes that came out of the committee.
So, who's gonna determine who the co- who the vice chair and the secretary is gonna be? If, if this passes and gets done, who's gonna determine that?
The members of the council.
The council does.
Yeah, you all decide, the council decides its own chair, vice chair, secretary, that's all internal governance.
Just making sure that it was staying the same.
Yeah, so that's all of the one bucket, which is the structural changes. And that is all, that is all the county commission's purview is as sort of the govern- And that is all, that is all the county commission's purview is as sort of the governing authority over everything. That, the rest of everything we talked about is going to end up, I don't, I haven't fully written out yet. I will provide you a copy when I get through, but this would be under what is essentially recommendations. These are the things that I heard talk about that are not the role and responsibility of commission. But I think is it important when all of this goes out to just say? And make sure that there's a little bit of a narrative that says, here's, here's an issue that may need attention. And it may fall under your bucket as Ameri- council, it may fall under the administration's bucket. But these are things that came up. I think you all should address them to help with morale, retention, recruitment, overall wellbeing of the officers. It's not my job to say how you should do it. I, I'm happy to get involved if people would like me to, but I just, I wanna make sure that of everything that was said, we just write it down. And I share it as a spread of record that says, here's things that came out and I hope that you'll do. It's kind of like an unofficial report, but, um, the things that I have on this list, um, addressing officer pay, pay scales, incentives, retention bonuses, educational stipends, et cetera. That is a huge massive topic, but I'm just gonna say it in a very professional way that says, this is something that needs to be addressed. That is the per, I have said it many times, that is under the purview of the sheriff. And it's not Ameri- council's job to pick that fight or to make those decisions. And they should never put that responsibility on you. It's something that the sheriff has all the authority to be able to do tomorrow. He could change the whole session, the whole way it's paid, he's got a deal with it. And, um, I'm gonna say it, but again, it's not commission's job. Um, lateral transfers, having a better way to bring in lateral transfers from other agencies and less restrictions on that. Um, and then instead of always, we talked about this, instead of always promoting from within where you start in jail and work your way up. Figure out a way that there's path to that, but there's also path to bring people in on a lateral basis, um, to bring in more opportunities.
Can I hit on that real quick?
Sure.
So when we use the language lateral, because I hear it every day, it's, we're taking lateral, we're taking laterals, we're taking. Lateral is actually, it, it would mean that we would hire somebody and make it at or more than they currently make. So at or more than they currently make. So we need to be real careful and make sure that HR, when they do their recruiting, they're not advertising as lateral. Because when they come over here, they start at the bottom of the pay unless it gets.
So what, what would be the best nomenclature for like bringing somebody from other agencies or welcoming them at other agencies where not?
Already certified officers, somebody that is already post-certified. Um, yeah, so you stay away from lateral unless the sheriff's office is willing to hire them in, uh, at what they're already made.
I would rather make it more generic. The intent is to say, find more paths to bring more people from other agencies that are.
Oh, yeah, post-certified officers, yes.
There are any part of the system instead of having to always start back in zero.
Right.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that. Um, another recommendation will be to, we talked about this, to have monthly meetings between their team and your team. That is face to face in person, trying to solve problems, trying to work on stuff, build relationships. I, I hope that will happen. Um, work together on modern HR software. That gives the process and applicants and everyone involved transparency, efficiency, mutual information sharing. The idea that paper, pieces of paper and files are being passed across the, the room or across the street is insane to me. Like the idea that, and, and Knox County can help with this, but.
They are, and you, I, you weren't at the last commission, uh, the last council meeting, but, um, Marcus Kennedy with AT, they're, I'm sorry. Knox County HR, they're, we're using their new VNS system for the application process.
AJ, yeah.
And it's something that will be shared, um, for instance, like right now for the, it'll go from the time they apply to the final onboarding. Because his department is having to manually enter pieces of paper of new hires for his department and he said, you know, his.
Does it also have the inter, enable you to interface with like the testing reports and some of those other things so that everybody?
He can kind of set it up from my understanding right now, what we're trying to just take care of the application and itself first, so.
Yeah, it would be, it would be great that if at some point at every part of this process, you're able to track, everyone's on the same page, cause a lot of, it seems like a lot of the conflict comes from, you know, the who did what and is it, you know. I, I think that that would solve a lot of problems. I'm glad you're there.
I was playing with it the other day and noticed that there's a section on there, you, excuse me, you can look for like open positions.
Right.
So they, they have been working on it.
Yeah, they're, well, Knox County's is set up and going, it's live, but there's part where he's gonna do our application, he's kind of building it out a little bit different.
That's good.
Gotcha. Because they're, they're not gonna be able to see it until they're eligible and we can release the application and then they have to access it.
I, I think a lot of the conflicts between the administration and Ameri- council will be solved by that robust system where you know exactly who's in the system. It would also help with data reporting and everything, steps and.
It would have the promotion process too, like the vision is nightmare, you know?
Oh my gosh, it would be like. So much, okay. Um, a recommendation to, again, we talked about this, one sheet information page of what you all do, what, you know, almost sort of your own.
We've done that, we've worked that, we've got that.
Who are we? Oh, you have, okay, I'd love to see that.
Yep. I'll see it too.
Yeah, okay, great, done, all right.
We break that into classes.
Um, perfect, how did that go?
I mean, there's not a whole lot of time to fully educate them of every process because it's so much.
Oh, of course, it's so much.
So it's a basic entry and they have all the information, the website, the council members, the staff.
Okay, um, standardized monthly, quarterly reporting, I think this is a, could be a big help. The stuff that you may provide to commission and everyone else, like the idea that we can constantly track year over year data and information in a uniform way. Versus you having to constantly read the, you know, new spreadsheets and new information. May, may come out of the AHR software, but it's something where it would be.
They already do that. Knox County already does that. That's where we get all our information. I don't understand why the sheriff's office doesn't access it that way as well. It's simply.
Again, these are just recommendations.
Yeah.
Um, um, I think one of the other things that came up was being able to, uh, build out anonymous exit surveys and figure out ways that officers can share. Things in an anonymous way on, if they were to leave and help us better understand why they did, um, again, that's, that's really under their camp. Um, you're already doing the orientation, so that was part of it. Uh, duh, duh, duh. I think the idea of, this would have to be something that both groups would want to participate in, but the idea of, um, the document that you showed of sort of our county versus this Knoxville Police Department of codifying structure, organization, pay, those kinds of things in, in a, in a more formal way is a good recommendation. I don't expect any sheriff will ever do that, but I do think it would be a great thing if some, if they wanted to, because I think it would help the officer to understand what's the path. And it would take a lot of the ambiguity out of it. Um, that was both of those. Um, define career paths, promotion tracker, eliminate discretion, you know, including those classifications and kind of helping you understand people, what is the path of promotion? Instead of being sort of a arbitrary thing. I think that's a good thing that came out. Um, provide more in-house training, education opportunities, um, stipends for education, specialty training. Um, working with a thoroughly vetted outside partner to recommend those pay scales and grades, I just like the pay scale. Uh, recommendation of comme, captain and command staff meetings, more communication. Um, it does seem like there are lots of silos. Again, this is more on the administration side, but there's lots of silos and information. So that would be, um, a recommendation. Um, I think it would be good to get, um, quarterly present, whether it be the chair or, um, some representative to have quarterly presentations by the Ameri- council to come to commission and actually come to commission meeting and sort of keep us informed. One of the biggest issues as I even delve into this is, you know, people don't know what it is, how it does. And I think if you can get a bit more building of relationships between commission and the Ameri- council, that would be help and, and we can, you know, further define that. But I think it would be helpful to, uh, to bring, you know, how's it going and what can we be helpful with, you know, ideas. Um, that's pretty much, the rest of these have to do with the same other pay scales and other things. So I'm gonna try to put those into some really simple buckets, but again, these are just recommendations. These are not our job. It's just, these came out during the meeting. I kept notes and said, everybody's talking about these, I hope you'll take care of them. Three quarters of these are on the administration side and I'll, um, only a few of them have to do with Ameri- council, so. That's kind of it. What questions do you all have of me?
Is Myers have a timeframe on working on the ordinance, cause I'm interested to see.
Yes, so. Yeah, so I'm gonna circle back with him and clarify a few things that came out today, so that he and I are on the same page.
Yeah.
The goal is to have, um, ordinances ready for the March agenda, um, which would be first reading in March and then the second reading in April. And then, um, if it passes first and second reading, then it would go into effect in July. And so everyone would have May and June, you know, obviously between now and then, but a, an additional two months of time to just kind of, let the dust settle, recruiting board members, things like that.
So this, um, so this document that you gave, gave us, this is.
Which one?
This, this one that you had.
Yeah, this is just kind of notes for Myers and for you all.
Yeah, so these, these like on the filling of vacancies, these are straight from the actual Ameri- system manual.
Correct. Correct.
And there is no section E under filling of vacancies. So, and here's where I'm going with this, cause this is really, I, this is where I'm going with it. So if we're gonna add a section E, it's under, um, the ordinance, uh, forty-two dash fifty-nine, filling of vacancies.
There's, there's a or, there's on page eleven, filling of vacancies.
It's six point one point one E.
Six point one point one general E, can I look there right here?
Let me see. That's, 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 that's the manual.
Oh, you're on the one.
I'm talking about the ordinances.
He's gonna take, I'm just looking at the manual, he's gonna go, here's the ordinance, here's the manual, how do I translate the two?
Yeah, so here's where I'm going with this, cause I don't care about the vacancies, cause I work here. And can we slip in like a section E where, with a two point five percent? So if we're gonna change the ordinances.
A what?
A two point five percent annual pay increase, can we just slide it in the section E?
It's not our purview. It's not, it's not under.
I was just asking.
Sorry.
That's why I was.
First off, hey, first off, it, it didn't come out of the committee, it wasn't the purpose of the committee, but it's not my purview to add that.
Come on, Larson. Fine. I was just trying, it was my last ditch effort.
You, you know what, you can propose an ordinance anytime separately from additional by the commissioner, but it's not part of this process.
I had to go to your sheriff and then ask you.
You can get a commissioner to amend the ordinance as they're voting on it, to put it in.
Yeah, Larson.
I'm gonna work on this right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And not include that in this discussion.
I'll, I'll.
But yes, if this ordinance goes through, if you have a commissioner that would like to add that to the ordinance during. But again, it has to go through a first reading, it has to go through a second, it would be good, it would be best to do that at a first reading.
You need to increase your circle of friends that can help you with that.
Any other questions about this? Again, I'm trying to be really basic of like, I came to you at the beginning of this process and here's exactly what I'm gonna do. We went through the process, we held our meetings, we agreed on some stuff, we didn't agree on some stuff. We walked through the backend of the process, show you the playbook of what it is I'm proposing. That language, as soon as Myers and I work on it, of course, will be published and shared with everybody. My, my first meeting is here with you all, my second meeting is next week with the administration. Go through the exact same thing I've gone through here and then go through the process with commission and see what happens from there.
Would it be a com, I'll hush after this, I know you came when we came to the meeting.
Ask me, but it's all right.
On, as a, as a member of the commission, uh, not commission, the committee, would it be, um, outlandish to have an employee representative on the actual council? Or would that be some kind of conflict of interest? Like, look where you've added new members. So instead of as like me just as, as a former employee representative, instead of just showing up to the board and sitting in the back, is there any way we could actually incorporate the, an employee representative on the council?
I don't know.
Because you would always.
I don't know if that's a, having an employee representative be actually a voting council member, if that's a conflict of interest or if that's good or bad. I don't, we never explored that and I don't know.
I don't know, I just, I was just gonna ask.
Never, I mean.
It would be, you would always have the availability.
Because there's three, so then you're automatically adding three more to the seven and.
We could have one of the three, I guess the question is.
Yeah, one, but which one, how many?
No, 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 no. So what I'm saying, no, 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 what I'm saying is you could still have those positions.
Right.
But when you say, where, where the language says one member having professional law enforcement or correction experience.
You want that person to be part of the board.
Why, why would you?
Because the point is that you would not have somebody currently.
Could you, you, could you, you, could you, could the county commission appoint an employee to the council?
No, because the point of this whole section is that they are not an elected, anybody who serves on the council is not part of the administrat, or is not currently employed.
Right.
Hasn't been within ten years.
Back to date, they want to be gone more than ten.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, but like, I was just thinking, so the, so the employees reps will never, they're just there to.
So that would work, yeah.
Yeah.
They won't vote, they will, I, I would guess it would always have a, a, a participation section, but they, I mean, they'll always have a voice at the council.
Yeah, gotcha.
But they wouldn't vote.
Right.
And I think that's the difference. When you get to a point of actually voting on a yes or no matter, those are people that are not part of it.
Probably wouldn't work, yeah.
And I think that's a, a direct conflict to the civil board.
Okay.
They may have to be like the county commissioners, but that commissioner's not gonna have a vote on the council.
Yeah.
They're just gonna sit on the council, they're gonna, they're gonna have a vote.
Obviously they will.
Wait, no, no, they would. All, all seven members would be voting members.
Oh, they, they don't, yeah.
Yep.
And is that, I guess Myers will flag it out if that's okay, cause when you sit on the ethics committee as a commissioner, you don't have a vote.
He's gonna double check everything, but he also went through, I think he sent us an email that said that there were very little, um, TCA restrictions on, you know, what we can do with our onboard, essentially. But I'll double check that.
Yeah, cause I, I know that they can't on that board. I don't know if that would be, I don't know why this one would be different to be able to vote. Any questions, Jerry?
I'm just trying to take it all in.
Yeah, it's a lot, I mean.
I mean, it'll be way, it'll be way more clear once the.
Sure, once the ordinance, but I just wanted to kind of throw it on paper first, talk to everybody. This is the whole purpose of having this meeting, the same meeting I have with the administration to go through. So if there's other questions or things that need to be further defined before it gets into ordinance form, I wanna go back and make sure we tweak it and further.
Cause there's several ordinances that all of this would affect.
Yeah, so this would all, and they would be, you know, that's why I want, I wanted to do this before we got too far down the rabbit hole. Because then, you know, we're not changing it at the last minute, the, the goal is to sort of hash it out at the front end and. But, but again, nothing that I'm putting here today didn't, isn't, this is only things that came out of the committee, um, and, and nothing else. And if other things, I mean, there's a hundred other things, if, if other things, um, needs help from the commission, then, you know, let me know. There's no reason we can't do other special committees or we can't help individually or whatever the case may be. But there was an early defined goal of what this committee was coming for and, and this is it. So this is kind of wrapping up the, what, what did we get into and what are we coming out with?
I mean, as long as Myers, and then.
Understanding.
Understanding that it's just promoting jobs, not promotion.
Sorry. Sorry, that is, um.
That, that guy is a little.
He's not, he's not at all.
No, 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 sorry. I meant like the promoting of, hey, we're doing a job fair, hey, we're doing.
He's not clear on that.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back right now and actually sit down and walk through this.
Yeah, yeah, that definitely is a huge, huge.
I'll do that. And then I'll go through and I'll, again, I'll have the same meeting next week with the administration. I'll walk through the same stuff, um, we will work on it this month. Uh, I'll send you all both the ordinance changes and this recommendation sheet. Um, this is just the recommendations, it's just to spread a record, just doesn't, no action needed, it just means, hey, everybody's, everybody has said, these are things that need help and then, and then that's it. And then we'll go through this process of the two ordinances. If they pass, then county commission will be helpful in the nomination process in May and June and, and help with that board structure in July. Um, if it's amended somehow, it will appeal. If it doesn't pass, then we're done.
And you're, you are sitting up for the new people that's gonna be, it's just coming from county commissioners, right?
Um, it could be, nominations could come from the floor, they can come from you all, it can come from eight, men, uh, commissioners. The nomination process is pretty open. It basically says, you, you put in a nom, the commissioners, you know, have to nominate somebody. Where that nomination comes from is up to the, I mean.
But it's not coming from the sheriff.
It can come from anybody. I mean, Brian could say, I wanna nominate my neighbor. And you could say, I wanna do nominate my neighbor and, you know, it, it's a nomination process. It's open to anybody as long as they are not employed and it come, and they qualify under one of those buckets.
I'll nominate Jim Wright Jr., that's on the list.
Does it have to be nominated? Like with, I remember when the vacancy for county commission and, and I submitted my own stuff, can somebody, can a?
Oh, yeah, they can walk in the door, it's, it's on the agenda and it says, we will be doing nominations at this meeting.
Gotcha.
Somebody can walk up and say, I wanna put my name in the hat and here's why I think it'd be good.
Okay.
So it's really well structured and, and it's, it's literally open to anybody. And then, you know, it's everybody's job to say, to try to educate commissioners of why this person would be good or bad or, or maybe, you know, throw a flag in there and says, look, you really don't, I don't know, that happens all the time, but.
It'll be interesting, cause there's never a whole, whole influx of people ever wanting to.
Yeah, sorry.
I've never had a county mission be overwhelmed by the number of people wanting to volunteer for.
Yeah. But you know what though, that also, that goes back to saying this, because nobody knows what y'all do.
There are a lot of people though. Yeah.
And I think the more that we get involved, we, again, you all get involved with each other, then the word will start spreading.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe some, I was like, I wanna be on that.
County commission ought to be a partner of yours, it shouldn't be an adversary of yours. Our county commission should be a partner to the administration. County commission is a, is a legal conduit, okay, but our, like, our job is to not always be in the middle of the fight, but to be helpful when we. And sometimes we're needed, we, we should be needed by you all and sometimes we should be needed, I think. But I think adding somebody to the actual council that is a commissioner will tie. But I think adding somebody to the actual council that is a commissioner will tie and bring more information and engagement, um, in a more productive way. It's been this thing over here that's, nobody's understood for, you know, forever, and I think that just by going through this process, people are more educated and informed already and hopefully it gets better and better, so.
I just got one thing.
Yes, sir.
I know you said you wrote all this up and, um, under the filling of the vacancies.
Uh, what, um, um, I've got an app.
Recruitment retention.
Uh, where's, what are the numbers you own there?
Uh, six point one point one general.
Oh, yes, sir, right on.
Um, so, so basically, we're gonna let the sheriff's department kinda handle all the recruiting group, but you feel like we're not doing a good job?
No, I think, I feel like it is one of those tension points where it, 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 the way it's structured out, it opens up opportunity for everybody to blame each other.
Right.
Because they say, you guys aren't doing a good job, and you say, well, you aren't doing a good, I mean, it, it, this is one of those things where it, it felt like an easy way to say, great. Never again, sheriff, will you ever accuse the mayor council of not doing a good job.
I, I get that, but you wrote this.
I did.
So do you feel that we're not doing the proper job?
It's not my job to, to know whether you're doing a good job or bad job, I'm not in the trenches, I'm just trying to, I just see a point of resolve that allows, I, I honestly don't know if you're doing a good job or, I mean. It seems to me that there are people applying and they're going through the system, but I, again, I haven't really like dug into it, so I, I, I wouldn't wanna say either way. You may be doing a fine job, I don't know, but I just saw it as like, there's a constant point where everybody blames the other side, let's just say, look, if you're so smart and you guys do it, you got a budget, here's the thing, you got a budget. You should be allocating fifty grand every year to recruiting, you should be having somebody that is a cheap recruiter, you ought to be going to job fairs, you ought to be doing all these things, but don't blame these folks, they're just, they're trying to help fill people once they get to us, and that's, I just felt that it was a good way to kinda resolve it, and look, at the end of the day, if they don't do a good job recruiting and Crystal, if they don't do a good job of pay, and they don't do a good job with all these other things, every four years, the opportunity to pick somebody that'll do a better job of recruiting and a better job of pay and a better job of whatever, that's on them, that's their job.
Well, this again, ordinance change.
Yes.
It, yeah, well, I mean, there's several ordinance, I, I'm not sure Myers will get them all, but I'll, see what I'll do.
Or, yeah, this, this is trying to write it down, anything.
This affects so many ordinances in different ways, that's why I was very specific.
If, if, if they don't, then we'll go back and change the.
Oh, sure, look, if this doesn't work, this is, this is a recommendation based on all the work we did, if this doesn't work, I, I, I would, I would encourage everybody to give it time to see if it does work and helps. It's gonna take a couple years to kinda understand that, right, does it change, nobody likes change, nobody likes changing this and that, but like, see if these things work, I think they're common sense reforms that have the ability to help. And then if it doesn't, great, we'll revisit it, any ordinance can be changed at any time for any reason, but these are not, I don't think these are so fundamental that it's gonna totally rock the world. I think they're good reforms, but I don't think it's gonna like fundamentally change law enforcement in this town.
As it could be plainly stated to administration of it, they still are to send them to us, not they keep themselves, they.
Oh, absolutely. No, 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 this, all this says that it's your job to do this, everything else stays the same, so we're only changing like the one responsibility. You go put, put people in the bucket, everything else, we've been through that, everything else stays exactly the way it is, we have, we changed nothing out of this committee, good at, and there's nothing here.
They're in charge, fill in the bucket, that's their job.
It's their respons- their sole responsibility, so that does not fall on us any longer, however, in my opinion, everybody is a recruiter to an extent, the officers, the employees.
Correct. Correct.
So if we talk to somebody or somebody calls us or, we can still take the application.
You can still, yeah, sure, you can still say, here, here's how you apply, but the idea that you, like, you will know, your team will no longer put ads on social media, go undo this, put ads in the paper, like. Spend your time and resources recruiting in a way that is not natural, everybody should be recruiting, I should be recruiting, you should be recruiting, but let them build a team that is their recruiting and puts people in that system.
I guess I have an issue with us just not being allowed to just put an ad out on a social media, because that is what we do, that is how, we've gotten almost nine hundred applicants last year alone.
Alone.
I mean, without them at all.
But here's, here's what you can do that would achieve the same thing, they are going to put stuff out on social media.
Yes. Right, which they should be doing now as well, too.
Right, you can share it on your social media, you can share, hey, they're looking for new people, look, there's a job fair, just share their stuff, but don't put, take a little off your plate and let them.
So when their social media says apply through the Knox County Sheriff's Office.
Well, no, no, the, 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 application portal's the second.
We'll, we'll see, okay, we'll see.
That, trust me, in what I will, I will, no, no, listen, trust me, I will tell them, the, the structure does not change.
I'll try. Yes. And you're the person in full question right now, but I'll, I'm.
Okay, but I will make sure it is clear when I sit down with them, the structure does not change, we did not, this is not changing that, they still have to put people in the bucket and they still have to go through the same pattern. They're not gonna create a whole new pattern, just promote it, just be the person who promotes it, so, I promise you, I'll make that clear.
I don't think that makes it against the rules for you to do it, though, when you say so.
Well, I know what he's saying that we don't, we can't, but Vegas, the sole responsibility falls on them, but if he's telling me, we're not allowed to do it, but just share.
Not that you.
No.
No, no, not that you're not allowed, I think you can.
Just, you can share it and you can, I'm just saying, take the primary responsibility off your plate.
Yeah. Okay.
Everybody should be recruit, you know, helping promote it, but let them do the primary job, and if they do a great job, great, and if they don't, it's on them, they can't blame you anymore.
Yeah.
It's not your job anymore.
The only thing I worry about is that it, if it is their sole responsibility and you have X amount of applicants that you have to provide.
That's why the ordinance is being changed, that's another ordinance that's gonna have to be changed.
Yeah, you don't.
See, one ordinance is gonna change another, that can change another.
I mean, but he needs to rewrite the ordinances, honestly, at this point, because I know way more about this than he does, and he comes to me for help. And at this point, every ordinance is gonna be affected, and he just needs to rewrite them, because it's gonna, when one changes, so there is an ordinance that specifically states we're supposed to supply five.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
For every vacant position, yeah, that's gonna have to obviously be changed, too.
Because they can't hold us till we're gonna give you five applicants for every opening, but you're supposedly out there recruiting these people, but then you're not getting them, it does fall back on us unless they change it that way.
If they're still responsible. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna make sure that's the case, they are to fill the bucket, you guys are to process people in the bucket.
I mean, as long as all of that's changed, then it doesn't fall back on us.
Right, it'll be, when the ordinances are clear.
Yeah, the goal is to not put more pressure on you, the goal is to say, if you wanna drive the boat, drive the boat, we will make sure that we get the crew trained when we come in, when they come on board, we'll make sure it happens. So, and again, these are, I, 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 I think all of these are small, they may have some complications, so, but I think they're small tweaks that will help the relationship, I hope they will, that's the goal.
Well, I think I see what you've done with this, is during the committee meeting, you said, can y'all give them something? So this is almost coming to them and giving them something, so they feel like they got something out of not having promotions and hiring and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I think.
And if they, and if they can do it, and they can live up to it, and put the people to work, and put patrol officers on the street, I don't have a problem with that. But the citizens of Knox County's gonna have a problem with it if they drop the ball over there, and then they don't have it, so we have less patrol officers, less correction officers.
Well, let's not assume they're gonna fail before they fail.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that this'll help us, I mean, we could, we could go around in circles all day, but.
And they're gonna. They're gonna have to, you know.
Well, they're gonna have to, because honestly, the retention is crazy.
You don't have any good luck.
I know, I.
Since January, do you know how many have walked out the door?
A lot.
Tell me.
A lot.
No, since January this year.
Double digits.
No, January this year. January this year.
January this year, we are, we lost nine.
Yeah.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, nineteen, behind.
Nineteen, alright, I was gonna say the double digits.
Six, nineteen.
It's never anything, it's just, there's no, but I mean, these people are just walking out the door, they're not.
Fifteen of those, nineteen.
They're, they're no notice here, so, yeah.
Okay, I, I, look, I got it, I know it is a huge concern, I know it's a big issue, but I also, like, these are, I think, some small
It's a way to be.
common sense reforms that will help the relationship, but at the end of the day, people still have to perform and they have to let, give people a chance to succeed or fail, give them a chance to succeed without assuming that it's all gonna go to hell. Same way with you guys, you know, we went through this, assume you guys do your job well and don't villainize, so let's just take it a step at a time, and, you know, we'll, we'll take it from there.
And that's what we want, our office, we just want to do our job.
I know.
I wanna do what I got hired to do twenty-three years ago, Ms. Taylor wants to do what she got hired twenty-four years ago, we just wanna do our job and do it right and do it correct and be let the way, it's like, let us do our.
It's been very complicated.
Yeah, let us do our job.
It's more complicated than it ever needs to be, yeah.
It, it, it is, I mean, one of the things I think I said early on in the process is, the thing that by, I mean, I, I've read every document and I've read all the original documents from nineteen seventy-one. And the one thing that was supposed to be the most apolitical, a controversial entity, somehow over thirty years or forty years, has turned into the most controversial, complicated, over.
Yeah, back to last year.
It's just, it's just, it's been the last, last two years.
Back to last year, cause I've said on this, Brian said on this, I mean, we would come in once every three months, have a five minute meeting, go, the sheriff came in, talked to Ms. Taylor, but when he got on, there was no problems, we went a whole year, there was no problems.
Yeah.
And in the last year, a little over, it's been politicized, and when they go run into commission, and commission's nothing but political, we know it, and then we do the committing and the committee's split down the middle, on which side everybody's fallen on, that's political, and then it's made us out to be the villain when these women are doing their job and have done it for twenty-three years with four sheriffs?
Three, yeah.
Three sheriffs, and there hasn't been a problem, and now all of a sudden we have a problem, so I don't think that you can appreciate the level of frustration that they have been having for the last year. The level of frustration that a council member has been having for the last year, um, I mean, you know, it.
I can appreciate it, I have listened to it, I haven't taken sides in this, and I haven't shown favoritism to any one side or the other, I think I've been very clear about exactly the process and exactly the purposes. But understand that everything you just said, is, I have heard the exact opposite perspective from multiple people in a different world. So you do have to appreciate that you all have a perspective, other people have a different perspective, I mean, that's.
When I, when I was on there, we had some big grievances, they brought in some, some of the, the big lawyers in town, and I had to sit through several depositions, and, you know, the current sheriff was number two. And it, from what I'm seeing from the outside looking in now, totally different than it was when I was on there, and we went through some big grievances that caused some, some big lawsuits, but.
I don't, I don't have thirty years of perspective or forty years of perspective, this, I'm just, look, I'm just trying to solve, can I help solve some problems or can I help make the relationship better?
These, these girls do, they've been here, they do.
I got it, I got it, I, I'm just trying to be very clear that.
There's some common denominator, yeah, what it may be.
That's not for me to decide, that's not my role, my role is to see, can I be helpful, that was the whole point of this committee in the first place.
We certainly appreciate all you do.
I want to say this and then I'm going to leave.
Okay.
Why?
Uh, because I appreciate you, uh, uh, the, the, from the tenure that I spent as an employee representative, I continually reached out to commissioners, please come pay attention, please come listen. I told the public, I told the officers, I've told, I told all them, I'm trying to get people to come listen, and if nothing else came out of anything from an officer's perspective, we appreciate it, the spotlight being focused back on, because that's where the conversations on what we, the people who wear the uniform, that we want to start have all, that, that's what starts the ball rolling, and so, so that we appreciate, and I thank you for that.
Well, thank, you're, you're very welcome, and my only intention and my only goal and my only agenda in this entire thing is, how can I be helpful in, in something that will ultimately help the officers? I don't know you all, I don't know the sheriff and his team, I don't hang out with you guys, I don't hang out with them, I don't have an agenda for you all, I don't have an agenda for him, I do have a focus on the officers, and that's the only reason, and I, and I think I've been very transparent from day one. If I can help something that will help the officers long term, great, tell me where to sign up, I'll do it again, tell me where to help.
And it started the ball rolling, right, with the salary and all that stuff, you know, cause officers are dying just trying to live, and so the conversation's there, and so that's what we appreciate.
Well, you're very welcome, I'll do, I will always do my best to help the officers, and that's, you know, goal, I'm trying to wrap this part up and then if there's other ways that I can be helpful, then let me know, alright, so. Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate you.